Everyone, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Holden Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. Also, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. Item 1.1, Land Acknowledgement, Opening Prayer to Our Father and the National Anthem. And now our staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holden, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
And animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledged and thanked.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee McGuire, could you please lead us in the opening prayer to our Father and the National Anthem?
Yes, thank you. And through your chair, I wanted to share a prayer with you all tonight about Lent, as we are in the season of Lent. It's very important to the inner Catholic faith, so I ask that you join me in the sign of our faith in the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, Amen. Loving God, during the sacred season of Lent, bring me closer to you. Prepare a place in my home and heart for silence and solitude, so that I may rediscover the grace of a powerful life. Enlarge my heart, so that I give to those in need, and in doing so, rediscover the grace of gratitude and generosity. Help me to fast from those things that threaten the well-being of body and soul. Remind me of the grace and simplicity. May this season be graceful time to rekindle my love for you and my faith in you. And I ask that you say the Lord's Prayer with me. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to say our daily prayer and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to the good of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McGuire. Motion arising from in-camera, there were no motions in the in-camera session that will require a vote in the open session. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or additions to the agenda? And do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Sanders? King for a second, please. Trustee Carabella? I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy? Trustee O'Han Chenara?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the agenda is approved. Our next order of business is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall now move on to presentations. There are no presentations tonight, as well as no delegations. We shall now move on to item number six, which is our next order of business, Consent Agenda Items. The following items have been agreed to be, to stay on the agenda as Consent Agenda Item 6.1, which is the minutes of the February 20th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting, and 6.2 Noted Items. There will be a single motion to approve the action items, which is 6.1. There will be no discussions, and there will be no discussions on the noted item as well. So I will now read the motion resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board approve Consent Agenda Item 6.1.1 on February 5th, 2023 as submitted. May I have a mover, please? Trustee moved by Vice Chair Agnew.
A second.
Seconded by Trustee Powell. There will be no discussion. I shall call the vote on item, on the Consent Agenda Item Number Six. Trustee O'Han Chenara?
In favor.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Sanders?
Favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy? So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. We shall now move on to action items. So next order of business is action items, number nine. 9.1 is the appointment of representatives to the OCSDA Board of Directors. We have one action item only, and this is our function as trustees, as governance. So this is the OCSDA Board of Directors for Region Number 13, which is our region. And this is for the term, for two-year term, May 2024 to April 2026, in our region has one representative. This was presented as a miscellaneous item in the last board meeting and is now an action item. For the past two years, Trustee O'Han Chenara has been our representative on behalf of the Board of Trustees. And you have received emails and updates and everything from Trustee O'Han Chenara. And I want to thank Trustee O'Han Chenara immensely for your tireless effort for bringing up the profile of our board like never before. So Trustee O'Han Chenara, thank you. And with that, I shall now pass the gavel to Director Klein to conduct the elections. And we shall follow the process as prescribed in our bylaws, number 3.6.2. Director Klein.
So before we proceed with the appointment of Region 13 Representative to the Oxta Board of Directors, I'll read the role of the Regional Director for everyone's benefit. But the role of the Regional Director is to know and understand the issues currently under discussion at Oxta, the position of Oxta on these issues, and the position of boards within their region on these issues. Know the full range of services that are available from Oxta for trustees and administrators, and encourage the maximum use of Oxta services. Engage and participate in meetings and association events. Seek input and views from their respective regions and bring forward issues to the Board of Directors. Help to build member board commitment to Oxta through liaison activities and information sharing with other trustees and other member boards. Keep boards and trustees in their regions aware of Oxta issues and initiatives, sharing available reports and position papers as appropriate. Enhance communication between the boards they represent and Oxta by providing on a regular basis to boards in their regions a report on Oxta Board of Directors meetings. Encouraging boards to respond to Oxta issues and discussion papers. Ensure that Oxta is kept informed of important issues, events, and needs of boards in their regions. Respect and protect the confidentiality of matters discussed at the Oxta Board. Should a vote by ballot become necessary, Superintendent Lofts will act as the scrutineer while I tabulate the ballots. Trustees present at the meeting by electronic means and who choose to vote may, at the time votes are being cast, cast or his, his or her vote by means of a private telephone conversation or by email with the scrutineer, who shall make the vote on a paper ballot in the same form and manner as though the ballot had been marked in person by the voter. And the ballots shall be then included with the other ballots to be counted. The ballots cast electronically in this matter are subject to the same obligations of confidentiality on the part of the scrutineer as those cast by voters physically at the meeting. A nomination motion for the position of Region 13 Representative to the Oxta Board of Directors must be moved and seconded. I will now ask for nominations to come forward. Trustee Agnew, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate Trustee O'Hern Shrinata to fulfill that role again.
Thank you, and that's moved by Vice Chair Agnew. Do we have a seconder? Thank you. Trustee Powell. Does Trustee O'Hern Shrinata accept the nomination for the position of Region 13 Representative to the Oxta Board of Direct?
Thank you so much. Yes, I humbly accept.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? It's again, second time, are there any other nominations? Third time, are there any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, I would now like to give each nom, sorry. I would like to give Trustee O'Hern Shrinata the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, and to thank for my nominator and seconder and all my fellow trustees for putting your trust in me again for another two years. I think I've learned a lot over the last two years, and hopefully will continue to get better and bring our voice of Region 13 to the Oxta table, which I think is very important. So thank you very much.
Appears no vote is required. Trustee O'Hern, Trustee Agnew has moved that Trustee O'Hern Shrinata be nominated for the position of Region 13 Representative to the Oxta Board of Directors for the two-year term, April of 2024 to April of 2026. The nomination was seconded by Trustee Powell. All in favor that Trustee O'Hern Shrinata be appointed for the position of Region 13 Representative to the Oxta Board of Directors for the two-year term, April 2024 to April 2026? In favor? There's no request for all against, so all in favor? Trustee O'Hern Shrinata, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I do not. Just thank you again.
Thank you. So the final motion reads as follows: Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board appoint Trustee Janet O'Hern Shrinata as the Region 13 Representative to the Oxta Board of Directors for the two-year term from May 2024 through April 2026? Once again, do we have a mover for that resolution? Moved by Trustee Agnew and seconded by Trustee Powell. Motion carried. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Director Klein, and congratulations, Trustee O'Hern Shrinata. And with that, we shall move on to our next order of business is staff reports. Item number 10, 10.1, Results of Grade 11 Indigenous Education Pilot. Superintendent Kroll, could you please present your report?
Good evening. Thank you through your, Mr. Chair, and pleased to also welcome our Indigenous Education Advisor, Sherry Stable, will be here with me this evening. Friend of many around the table. So this report is to provide an update to the Board of Trustees regarding the pilot implementation of Grade 11 Indigenous Education courses in secondary schools this past year, with the intention to expand this to all secondary schools for the 24, 25 school year. As part of our commitment to truth and reconciliation, our Board's Indigenous Education Plan, we've been looking to increase the number of Indigenous education courses available and to provide more opportunities for all students to take Indigenous education courses. Part of the, as an alternative to the Grade 11 English curriculum, the Ministry of Education has developed Grade 11 English curriculum titled "English: Understanding Contemporary First Nations, Métis, and Inuit Voices" at the college, workplace, and university level. And this course provides students opportunities to learn the history of Canada in a way that is truthful, ensuring proper treatment of the history and experience of Indigenous peoples, including the experience of oppression and marginalization which resulted from the Indian Act, the residential school system, and ignoring signed treaties. There's more information sort of there that talks about sort of the, the, this course being a prerequisite to Grade 12, as is the traditional Grade 11 course, and it is equivalently recognized by colleges and universities. In April 2023, you heard a report that we brought of schools that were piloting this as their Grade 11 English course in Semester One of the 23, 24 school year. During this time, Curriculum Staff and Sherry, our Board's Indigenous Education Advisor, have offered several professional development sessions for English teachers in all secondary schools beginning this year. Sherry did one today for staff. This is work that is ongoing throughout the 23, 24 school year to support teachers to teach this course next year, as well as build capacity in all of our schools. As part of the pilot, and it was discussed at the board meeting last April, we collaborated with our wonderful research department to survey students, teachers, and parents' guardians at the end of Semester One. Summary of the results were attached to the report. The feedback was helpful, and the feedback helps us know how we can improve the course and make it the best possible offering for Grade 11 students, while also addressing areas of need for teachers who be teaching this course. Many of the respondents indicated they were satisfied with the course, the content, and the approaches of teaching and learning. Any of the students responded they were able to directly connect the course learning to Catholic graduate expectations. Teaching staff shared the many successes they had during the semester, along with some of their challenges, and made recommendations for our release time and resources, which we perceived as valued feedback. Some parents felt we should stick to the traditional Grade 11 course, but we feel this, that expanding this course to all of our secondary schools demonstrates a clear and ongoing commitment to truth and reconciliation, allowing all students to learn about Indigenous history, perspectives and culture, as well as their own responsibility as Canadians and as Catholics towards truth and reconciliation. We did get questions as to why this learning couldn't have been offered as part of a Grade 11 history course. There is no mandatory Grade 11 history course. So by putting this into a history course, it means that only certain students would get this important education. Other feedback from some parents suggested that we stick to more traditional literature. Sorry, let me back up. Another comment that we, that we were given was why couldn't this be sort of replacing the Grade 10 history course? There's no equivalent ministry curriculum for the Grade 10 history course. There's no, as there is for the Grade 11 English, there's no replacement. You can't, you just can't substitute one for the other. Other feedback from parents suggests that we stick to more traditional literature. Throughout elementary and secondary school, there are many, many opportunities for students to be exposed to traditional literature and a wide variety of texts. A few parents expressed concerns about the skill development of students. I can assure you that the skills that are in the Grade 11 English course are equivalent, identical to the skills, the requisite knowledge in the Grade 11 MBE course. So students are well-prepared for Grade 12 English by taking this, the Grade 11 Indigenous education. Considering the feedback from surveys demonstrating our commitment to truth and reconciliation, it's our intention to move forward with the implementation of Grade 11 MBE in all of our secondary schools for the 24, 25 school year. That concludes our report. Well, Sherry and I are here to happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. With that, I shall open up the floor to trustees. We have a speaker's list. Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
And through you, Mr. Chair, I just, I do have a question. Sorry. About prepping teachers for the ability to provide this course. And some of the feedback that I've got from parents has just been more about uncertainty, and it's, it's new to a lot of people. And so, you know, how are we prepping, supporting the implementation and instruction in this new course for the students that are going to be in, learning Grade 11 English?
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to the talent here. We've taken a variety of approaches over the last couple of years, so we have done whole group, like large groups. We pulled large groups of teachers out. What we've learned is that schools really appreciate sort of small group learning. So Sherry was at one of our high schools today, along with our, our English consultant and others, working with small groups of teachers, and I'll let you maybe talk more about that.
Thank you. This is not new learning with our board, because we started this learning back in 2015, 2016. And so it has been an ongoing journey that we're providing professional development for all our teachers, not just our English teachers, but all our teachers from K to 12. That's our role as well within truth and reconciliation when we look at 62 and 63 from the truth and reconciliation. We also are called in section, in calls to Action 65 when we're a non-denominational school, to make sure that we are including certain perspectives, Indigenous perspectives in the curriculum. So to answer your question, it's ongoing, and it has been ongoing for quite some time. Now it's targeted. It is targeted within, within the English department, as well as we have professional development law, we have professional development history. And we just finished doing social studies just before, just before the holidays. And that was Grade 1, 2, and 3, and we, and we touched with all, all those teachers right throughout our, right throughout our region. So this one here that we are targeting, maybe that's the wrong word, I'm not quite sure, that we, that we are focusing on is the, the English teachers. So they're all the English teachers, not just the teachers that will be teaching MBE through you. So it's all the English teacher, because this is learning for everyone. One of the things I do wanna, do wanna kind of go off script here a little bit is we had a fantastic speaker last week, and his name was Cadmus Delarme. And he had also said that this is the first generation, this is the first generation of kids that are going to be told the truth about what happened in, with Indigenous people. So, you know, we're having those conversations at the, at the dining room table with our children and understanding what they're learning. This is all new learning, but this has also been a plan with, of this board since 2015 as well. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you. So follow up. And so, thank you very much. So that was one part of some of the comments and feedback that I've gotten, and as an English major, I can appreciate where some of the questions are coming from. The second piece to that, you did touch on it a little bit, Superintendent Kroll, was students are not going to be missing any of the fundamental elements of learning. And, you know, so maybe I'm going to make an assumption, and I hope that you can just speak to it. But this is, this is a difference in the subject matter, the, the types of authors. Perhaps, again, the information that students are learning is going to be focused in this area. But the fundamentals about comprehension and, you know, author's point of view, and, you know, writing what they need to do, and learning all of those fundamental pieces, those are not going to be lost, right? Those are still going to be part of this. This is just, instead of being called XYZ, this is contemporary. Okay, so I just, I'm wondering if you could just speak a little bit of that, because that's been some reassurances that, again, students and parents have been looking for, that they're not losing anything in the expectations and the way it's being taught.
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, again, I'll start. The curriculum expectations that speaks specifically to skill development, so for reading, writing, oral, are identical, literally, word for word, identical expectations. Think about it like a focus course, which you might have taken in university, which had a specific topic, but underneath that is the Grade 11 English curriculum. Right? So we're focusing on a specific sort of, there's a specific focus to the topic of the course, but in terms of the curriculum expectations, the preparation for Grade 12 English, identical. Kids aren't losing, they're only gaining.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. Next, next up is Trustee McGuire. You have the floor?
Thank you, and through your chair, thank you for bringing this to the board and stuff. Thank you for all your hard work. I attend Loyola, so I'm part of the MBE 3U pilot myself. I'm in the course right now. And I've heard wonderful things from peers, and I've had great experiences myself. And I really like what you said about, like, I guess it's our way of our board taking action for truth and reconciliation, and kind of what Cadmus said is we, like, the young people, we're the first generation to know the truth. So seeing that, like, how do you think that implementing MBE 3U will help to, I guess, get schools more involved with truth and reconcili action, but also to engage students within this work as they leave school? Thank you.
Superintendent Kroll, Sherry, go ahead.
I'm going to turn this over to Sherry as well, and I'll, I mean, I didn't, but.
Yeah. Reconcili, reconciliation is a long road, but we have to get to the truth first before we can, before we can have reconciliation. And that's a whole piece of history and language and literature that has been missing. You know, we have a plethora of Indigenous authors, writers, poets, playwrights that haven't had the, the venue, in a sense, to be able to teach our youth. And so when we looking at some of the texts, the text has, has been there. When I was going to school, there certainly was not the text that is, that is available today. What we're providing also is providing our students that support for when they do go to university or college, because most universities and colleges right across the country now require you to have an Indigenous Studies course before you get your diploma, your certificate, or your degree. So just by having that extra little bit of support or focus within our, within our students is perfect. And, and again, you know, we, we're Catholic school board, we have, we're discerned, discerned believers. We are social justice-minded in our pillars, and those would also lend to reconcili action. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Trustee McGuire.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Have a follow-up?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Up next is Trustee Powell. You have the floor.
Um, thank you for presenting this, because I had, I have a child in Grade 11 who we were going through courses and looking at it. Um, I, one of my questions was answered. It was what Trustee Agnew, Vice Chair Agnew, was saying about the skill development. So you explained that well. And I guess just to expand on that, there's, there isn't a track record yet as to kids applying into university. Like, there's no issues. I know, I know this has been said, but there's no issues whatsoever of this if you have this as your Grade 11 English.
I know, I know this has been said, but there's no issues whatsoever of this, if you have this as your grade eleven English and then you're applying, there's no.
Uh, Superintendent Croll? Sorry, yes, through you, Mr. Chair, my apologies. No, in fact, as, as we, we, as I know other school boards have had repeated conversations with the ministry about, about that. They've made assurances with colleges and universities. One of the things that's been recently rectified, uh, a few years ago, this course was not recognized as a senior level English course for students applying to American colleges and universities, but that has since been rectified as well.
Trustee Powell?
Can I just have a follow up too?
Sure.
It's about the enrollment. Um, do you, do you have an idea of what the enrollment was for this, these four schools, the four pilot?
For the pilot?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay.
Um, it would be certainly, uh, you know, say that again? Fifteen sections, so probably fifteen sections, so call it like four hundred students.
Wow, that's great, okay.
Thank you, Trustee Powell.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Up next is, uh, Trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my, thank you very much. Uh, my question was also about, uh, just a bit of, for the numbers of how many students, so for about four hundred students took it this past, this year we're in right now. And how many, uh, so and out of the four hundred students, the survey was filled out by a hundred and eighty-four students. And how many, um, students are there in grade eleven who, who didn't take the course, so who chose to choose the other, uh, English?
So, uh, you're talking specifically those four schools?
Uh, no, I think, well, I think the way the program, I think what I'm asking is what is going to be the impact also next year? How many grade eleven students are there generally that will be taking this course?
Uh, Superintendent Croll?
I'll, I'll give you, all would be the intention. I couldn't put a number on that, but the intention would be that all students in grade eleven would have this opportunity.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
Yeah, so to follow up, I guess it wasn't here. So you're proposing, or the subject council is proposing that next year, all the grade eleven pathways in all the secondary schools will be required to take this course.
Superintendent Croll?
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I would say that they will all have that opportunity next year. Yeah, that's our intention.
Thank you. I'll come back to you. You had your two questions, uh, have you there? Uh, up next is Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Thank you for that. Um, I think it's great for, um, students to have the, uh, option to learn, um, to have this course as an option. My question is, I remember at a previous board me- meeting, you had mentioned that this was first introduced as an elective before the mandatory pilot program of this year. So my question is, how many schools were offered this course as an elective this year?
Superintendent Laught?
Or last year.
Uh, go ahead, Superintendent Laught.
Uh, sure.
Sorry.
That's okay. Aaron, you're welcome to answer this one. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I think off, off the top of my head, almost all schools have this as a potential elective. It's not always a course that runs every semester in every school. Our feeling is that by making this course, the sort of, that the default grade eleven course, it allows all of our students, when they graduate from HCSB, to have learning in Indigenous education. So go back to what, uh, Trustee McGuire was saying earlier, like, what's the impact? We graduate students that have a common understanding of the history of Canada and also current events, right? That what's going on now in terms of, you know, the, the continued discoveries of residential schools, the continued discussion around land claims, the continued discuss- So this is, we're preparing future ready students.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy, follow up?
I'd like to, to follow up. Um, so then, do you have the number of students who electively chose to take this course this year or last?
I do not.
Okay, I have another follow, that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Can I come back to you? I have a speaker list, I'll put your name down here. Uh, up next is, uh, Trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
A comment there, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, that, um, it doesn't run at all schools, but it's offered at all schools. Why wouldn't it run at some schools if it's offered at all schools?
Uh, Superintendent Croll?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just like with any course in high school, uh, you have to have a minimum number of students to be able to run that course. So if we don't have enough students that have elected to take that course, in, in the schools that aren't piloting as it was, it would be considered an elective. Right? Something that choose students would choose to take.
Uh, Trustee Kennedy?
Is there a difference between elective and optional? Are, are those two different things?
Those are the same thing.
They're the same thing?
No, again, just to be clear, a student could choose to take this as their grade eleven university credit, English credit, but it's a choice that they're making.
So thank you, Trustee.
Verify that. So the reason why it's not run at certain schools is because there's not enough uptake, correct, in students voluntarily taking the course?
Thank you. I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you. Uh, top next, Trustee Chua.
Thank you so much, Chair, through you. Uh, Sherry, I just wanna say the work you've been doing is amazing. I took MBE three U for you, sorry. Uh, oh, wait, my brain, three U because of you. Um, genuinely, you're an amazing person. Um, and you've made it, you've made the course the way it is throughout our board because of your impact. And I took it at St. Francis Xavier, um, deliberately as my grade eleven credit. It was not mandatory. I loved it. Um, I was just wondering, uh, my teacher taught it in a way, uh, where it's very experiential learning based. So we were able to get in these guest speakers, um, and do these activities. Um, and I know there's specific, uh, ministry funding, um, in specific to the MBE three U courses. Um, will you be trying to implement more, um, experiential based learning throughout all the MBE three U courses? Or is it optional, uh, between whatever the teachers want to choose in every school?
Sherry?
Um, yes, it is ba- it's, sorry, uh, there will be a lot of experiential learning because it is through our elders, it is through the knowledge holders that also bring the curriculum to life. There is lots of people that, that can also do it, but we really rely heavily on our community and those, and those teachers. Uh, those ones that, uh, that were in through the residential school, but know how important education is as well to, in order to give it to the, in order to be supportive and to, just to have that experience for this generation as well.
Thank you. Trustee Chua, follow up, uh, comment, anything else? Okay. Uh, we shall now move on to Trustee Saunders, you're the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, the current curriculum now for grade eleven English, is it, is there like a theme? Is it Shakespeare? Is it? So what, what are we teaching now and will, uh, students have an opportunity to sort of bridge this gap and take these courses? So what are they taking now and, and how will they access these courses if they choose to specialize in English?
Superintendent, uh, Croll?
Sure, certainly. So there is, the curriculum for English is not, does not have content specific. So for the grade eleven, grade nine through twelve, it's focused on expectations, not focused on texts. So you could, you could have a course at Corpus Christi that offers six texts and the same course at Notre Dame offers a completely different six texts between fiction, nonfiction, plays, all sorts of, it's about meeting the expectations. So I guess my question would be, in terms of someone who was an English major, it wasn't a requirement that I went to university that I read all my Shakespeare. I needed to know how to write an essay, I needed how to construct an argument, I needed how to sort of be able to, um, think critically, be able to listen and respond to arguments. It didn't matter what text I read, it mattered what I learned from my teachers through the text.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Thank you. Uh, so we shall go back to Trustee, uh, Carabella. You had a hand up?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So can you explain to me how like the subject council works? Cause they're the ones who, and who made the decision or like how to, to, to implement this across all the schools and all the grades? Was there a vote or like, does each high school? That's my, have a subjects council? And that's my first part. And the second part is, is did you back from all English teachers as well, because this impacts, um, many people. Thank you.
Superintendent Croll?
Sure, we've certainly done this in collaboration with our subject council. It's not been made by the subject council, it's been made by the curriculum department, um, which includes Sherry. We've certainly been consultative with teachers. We haven't consulted all teachers. We require, we rely on our departments to be the voices of their departments and the voices of those, the teachers within their departments. We have not had any significant pushback on this. This, the concerns that teachers have raised is around training and around resources. If you can give us the training and you can give us the materials, we'll happily be able to deliver this curriculum. There's, there's a shared sense of importance.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. You have other questions, I can come back to you. Uh, Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, just curious what other Indigenous education courses we offer other than English?
Sure.
Uh, Superintendent Croll?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. Off the top of my head, we offer, uh, there is grade nine Indigenous art. So NAC one O is the course code. It is equivalent to the grade nine art course. Some schools do offer that as their art course, some schools offer as an elective. I'm not sure that any schools offer grade ten Indigenous art. Um, are there any other courses that we're currently offering? Thanks. So just those two?
Just two?
Trustee Kennedy?
Just a question regarding the survey, just wondering, how did you decide who to survey for the course? It looks like we surveyed the four schools that are, it's a compulsory course this year. Is that, are those the, the students and parents of those schools are the only ones we've surveyed?
Correct. And the reason for that is because those were the students that were part of the pilot. So they're the ones that were able to talk about their experiences having taken the course.
So.
Uh, I think I have Trustee Saunders waiting there, so I'll go to Trustee Saunders and come back to you. Trustee Saunders?
Just a quick question, I think, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, this might be for Superintendent Laught. I recall, and this is just going from memory, that we had received funding for, I think, Indigenous Studies. And does this course secure that funding? Is this part of that? I just, could you just speak to that a little bit and just let me know?
Superintendent Laught?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you're correct, um, uh, Trustee, um, Saunders. We did receive additional funding this past year for it. It was funded that is to be used for Indigenous Studies. Um, it would fall under the parameters of this course. Uh, it's also, if it's not spent, it is reserved and carried forward to other years to be used for this initiative.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, now go back to Trustee Carabella, do you have, uh, other question?
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So, um, my question would be, um, with regards to the survey, so, um, it's not overwhelmingly in support. There are some people in support, some aren't. And sometimes when you see the survey questions, you know, you kind of, I would expect something a bit more direct. And can I get, uh, so sort of asking a question about, uh, you know, would they recommend this course? Or if they have a choice, would they choose Eng- this, this course or the English course? So, and also we just don't know, they've just finished grade eleven and we don't know how their grade twelve will go. So I'm, I'm just a bit concerned that the student doesn't have a choice to choose what, what they feel is important. So I just, um, would like to hear your comments on that.
Uh, Superintendent Croll or Dr. Collmore? Not sure.
I can start by answering this, it's the second half of the question. So with regards to preparation for grade twelve, the teachers that are teaching grade eleven are often the ones that are teaching the grade twelve English course. And they certainly wouldn't be having students leave a grade eleven English course, whatever the course topic, and feel that they weren't prepared for the grade twelve course. So I think we need to dispel that. Uh, secondly, with regards to, um, maybe I'll have you repeat the other part of your question, just so I can make sure that I give a proper answer to it.
I would say how were the survey questions, uh, developed and why weren't they maybe a bit more specific? Like, if you had a choice, which one would you choose? Thank you.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't think it would be fair to ask a student to compare between a course they've taken and a course in which they hadn't taken. Right? I can't ask students to provide, uh, feedback on a course for which they haven't taken. They haven't taken E and G three U, so I couldn't ask them to compare those two.
Thank you. Uh, clarifications?
Just a follow up then.
Okay.
But when you look at the, the, the course, the schools that just had it as an elective, there wasn't such a big choice for that course. Maybe they're feeling that they have, have it, um, have that in other, um, courses. The grade ten Canadian history since World War One, or the grade eleven faith and culture, world religions. I'm understanding that some of, uh, that, those classes also cover the same material. Thank you.
Superintendent Croll?
Uh, the grade eleven, or the grade ten history course covers the entire of history since World War One. We certainly couldn't fit all of the learning that goes into the grade eleven course, the MBE three U, in one history course that way. It becomes a portion of the vast learning that's going on in that course. Students in grade eleven have a multitude of cho- of choice with courses of electives to take. They only have very few mandatory courses. We do feel that this is necessary learning and important learning and demonstrates our commitment to truth and reconciliation. So while the students may not always choose what's good for them on their own, we wanna help make sure that we're setting them up for success and we're making sure that they have what we think is really important learning.
Thank you. Uh, I shall now go to Trustee Murphy and then come to Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Superintendent Croll, I believe, or maybe Dr. Collmore. Um, so I, I, just in my opinion, I would have loved to have seen some grade nine and ten students and parents surveyed on this, since it is going to be, um, very impactful to them as they choose their courses in the coming years. Is there a reason why they weren't or could we do that? Or like, I'm just trying to understand the urgency of this without polling more people. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Croll.
Sure, typically when we do a pilot, we, we solicit feedback from those that participated in the pilot. The urgency is that students are choosing their courses right now. Um, we had to wait until the end of semester one to make sure that students were able to provide feedback on a course they'd finished. So your, HCSB students are right now filling out their option sheets. We'd like to remove any sort of, um, misunderstanding and misconceptions. That's the reason for the urgency. You feel this is like, it's, it's happening in schools right now. Students are choosing their courses for grade eleven. They want clarity as much as possible.
Thank you, Trustee.
Can I have a follow up? Um, so those students, um, who have already selected, uh, their grade eleven, cause I believe there was a March first cutoff at some schools, I'm not sure if it's all schools. Um, what does that look like? Are they gonna be told imminently that they're no longer taking the English course that they thought and it's gonna be subbed in? Uh, or how's that gonna look?
Uh, Superintendent Croll?
As we did with the pile last year, when we went ahead with the pilot, we informed students that, that the English course that they were taking was being replaced with a different course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Trustee Murphy, uh, Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, when were those students notified that they would be subbed in with the new course over the summer? There was one comment I saw where a parent had said, you know, my child had picked the course before March and then it was over the summer, right before school started that they were told. Actually, it's this course. When were they, when were they informed?
Uh, Superintendent Croll?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. It was after the board meeting in April where we shared that news about the pilot, I think almost immediately after.
So after they chose?
Yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. I'll come back to you. A speaker who's not spoken before. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I wanted to thank Croll and Sherry Savelle and the heads of department for taking the curriculum and, and putting it together with their stated, um, experience as to what, uh, we think we need to do moving forward. And I think by adding this course, uh, to what Sherry Savelle says, puts the action and reconcili action. So I, I think it's fantastic and, um, it's great moving forward. Just my comment.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, you have spoken only once. I'll give it to you. Uh, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So just a question, um, about, I, I, I'm hearing a lot of the traditional English versus what we're hearing about today. Um, but what I'm curious about is students that take grade eleven English, they sign up for this grade eleven English. They're not told necessarily in advance what books they're reading, what this, what they're gonna be taught, who they're gonna be au- they're, they're just taking grade eleven English at an applied or an academic level because they need to have that course to get to grade twelve. They're taking it because they need that English requisite and they're gonna learn all those fundamental pieces about, you know, building on their skills, again, with comprehension and par- all that, the English piece that goes with it. So those students, when they sign, they don't, am I correct in assuming they don't get that information ahead of time? They're just told this is the English course you're taking and the teacher's gonna determine, based on the curriculum expectations, based on the learning objectives, what they're gonna teach and how they're going to teach it. Is that correct?
Superintendent Croll?
I can tell you're an English major. I can tell you're an English major. Yes, that's exactly right. Um, it's, and it would even vary from schoo- from, within school to school, from classroom to classroom. Right? The different teachers will teach it, different books. We're also hoping the teacher will teach books, or teach based on student interest as well, not just on the decisions that they make. So yeah, absolutely. When students sign up for grade eleven English or any English course, it's an understanding that it's a, it's a, it's a course that has specific expectations that all students will learn. How they learn those expectations is left to the discretion of the professional development of the classroom teacher, the department head, um, as well as the curriculum department.
Thank you, Vice Chair, go ahead.
So then, just as a follow up to that, so to that point then, that they, you could have some students that are gonna be learning about Margaret Atwood, some students are gonna be learning, you know, they're gonna be reading, you know, Orwell or whatever that might be. It's not gonna be determined until they get there. They're just, it, it, again, it's, it, similar to this, the difference is, is that with this particular courses, we know, we know what the subject matter is going to be, if you will, but we are still going to have authors and, um, and different writing styles and different approaches, the same way we would in the other course, it's just a different subject matter. And again, we don't even know in some of those English courses what that subject matter might be either. It could be that that teacher has a prevalence to teach some, you know, some books that a t- another teacher doesn't based on something. So the difference with this one is that- So the difference with this one is that it is labeled what it is labeled. It's been designed a specific way to focus on that topic area. Correct?
Superintendent Kroll?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, I shall go back to trustee Murphy, trustee Murphy? Yeah, it's okay. Sorry, trustee Kennedy then, trustee Kennedy?
So just regarding the survey, so we, we, we do surveys, many surveys, we're quite good at it. And we tend to survey a lot more than, you know, a specific group. So I see you surveyed again, it was a follow up to my last question, the grade elevens, trustee Murphy I mentioned a little bit. But, you know, even one of the parents mentioned, well, you know, that the course is now over, so like regardless, my child has finished semester one. But why not look at surveying some of the grade nine and tens? And, you know, we, given example, this is not exactly the same thing. But when we have a vote on, say, uniform policy at elementary schools, we don't survey the grade eights, we don't survey the grade sevens. We survey those who will be coming into the new policy and they can decide what makes sense for them. So why can't we expand it to those grade nine and ten parents to give their input to see, while they haven't taken the course. We could ask them a simple question, maybe be a little bit more direct, like, you know. A direct question, if you have a choice between English three U or E and G or both. What would you be leaning towards? And that could give us some good indication of how to proceed, why not do that?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, yeah, superintendent Kroll?
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, again, there's a reason why we do a pilot. The reason why we do a pilot is so we can take a look at what it looks like in, sort of, on the ground as it's being implemented. We are consultative in a lot of different ways around a lot of different things. My general feeling is, this is a decision that can be made by a school board, that can be made by a curriculum department. That's in the best interest of student learning and student outcomes. It aligns with our commitment to truth and reconciliation as both the school board, as Catholics and as Canadians. That's my response.
Thank you, Superintendent Kroll, and for some, for trustee Kennedy, we had pilot program for the French program to, to any service of any of this. It was very successful. Up next is trustee Kelly, trustee Kelly on the floor?
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, I do just want to extend my appreciation for all those involved in piloting and providing this course to students. It's really great to hear from our student trustees here at the table and see positive responses from students who did take this course. I do remember like when this course was still in the works as a student trustee, and I do wish that I had the chance to learn about this. Um, like learning media literacy and literature in general was not limited to just Shakespeare. And I doubt, I do not doubt that meaningful skills were definitely taught to students in these courses and has been expressed by many of them, as seen in the survey. So my question is, if this may be offered, maybe way, way down the road, of course, as an AP or an IB course, obviously not anytime soon, but that's just my question.
Can you state your point of privilege? It appears that trustee Kelly is still wearing. Can you, can you, trustee, trustee Saunders? Yes. When, when I ask you state a point of privilege, you will point me to a bylaw policy that has been broken. So can you state the policy? State the bylaw that has been broken? Okay, so your statement of the last meeting spoke directly to the issue. Trustee, trustee Kennedy. One second, I'll repeat the question, trustee, sorry. I am.
Point of order to that?
I need to, sorry, trustee, trustee Saunders. Thank you. When you say, when you say point of order. Yeah. You will state the bylaw that has been broken, or you state a policy that hasn't broken.
Right.
Now, can you state either one of those that's broken? I, I believe the policy is the one you enunciated in the last. I don't, well, trustee Saunders, I do not recognize that as a policy or a bylaw. And thus, thus you're out of order. So we shall move on, trustee Kelly, you were saying something, you're the floor.
Yeah, so just my question was, if this may be offered, maybe way down the road as an AP or an IB course.
Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, thank you for the question, trustee Kelly, and we are having, we believe that there is alignment with both the AP and the IB curriculum as well. So we're really working with schools, when we say full implementation, that's certainly our intention, so for all pathways, including AP and IB. But it, but that is an ongoing conversation with those schools, to be clear. There are different courses in AP that have different requirements. So we have to, we have to make sure that we're able to meet the mandates of the program as well as the entire curriculum.
Thank you, trustee Kelly, do you have a follow up?
No further, thank you.
Thank you, I shall now go back to trustee Chua, trustee Chua, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to say again, like, I think we all know that reconciliation is not an option. We should not be able to choose whether we want to or not to learn about indigenous education or what, you know, Canada has done to, you know, indigenous people. And if we keep this as an elective, we are deliberately allowing reconciliation to be optional, which is something that we should not be doing. So I just wanted to sort of state that and ask. So the awareness piece about, you know, this course, so I know that, you know, we have informed our parents and informed our students. That if they chose E and G three U, that they will be taking MBE three U. I know in my school in particular, when I took it, there was a lot of awareness and a lot of, you know, promotion to get students excited to wanna, you know, take this course. Is there any sort of, whether it be individual school action or board action, that will sort of like incentivize or excite our students to want to take this course? And like, you know what I mean?
Superintendent Kroll?
Sure, and certainly through you, someone who wasn't able to join us tonight was. Josie Hall, she's the principal Laola, and I know that she did a lot of work with her staff and her community to raise awareness. One of the benefits of a pilot is you can look to see what works, and there's an example of something that did work at our schools that we would certainly want to put into practice. When, we have, with the intention of expanding this to all schools, we want to make sure the students understand the course they're taking, understand why they're taking it. And as you said, get excited about it, absolutely.
Thank you, trustee Chua. For the comment.
Thank you so much.
I shall now go back to trustee Kennedy, sorry for calling out wrong, trustee Kennedy on the floor.
Just regarding the comments and next steps at the beginning, it says, many of the responders indicate they were very satisfied with the course. I see there weren't many, but that was about twenty five percent. And then I see that there's about fifty one percent say they're dissatisfied about the course. Do we have any comments on that and why you think it's a two to one ratio of dissatisfied versus satisfied among parents?
Superintendent Kroll?
Yeah, you know what, and when I wrote that, I was thinking more about the comments rather than the specific response to the survey. Because if you look at the comments, it is certainly, there's lots of comments, positive as well as lots of comments negative. What I would say is my experience in implementing curriculum. Anytime you're implementing something new, there's going to be pushback, there's going to be, why aren't we doing it the old way? You know, we liked it better the other way. So honestly, I'm not overly surprised that it wasn't, and we would have had seen, we would have seen similar responses when we implemented the de-streaming curriculum a couple of years ago. It doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do, it means we have work to do when we implement it. And the feedback that we get from servers like this definitely helps us get better at that job, definitely helps us make sure that teachers are supported. Make sure that we've got the resources in place that we need and make sure that students are getting the best experience possible out of that course. So I judge it on the.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy, you have a.
Yeah, just through you, Mr. Chair, so I noticed maybe for superintendent loss, the indigenous education grant for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four on the ministry side, it's about one point five million, our projection, like you mentioned earlier. They don't have the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three actuals yet. But they have the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, so two years ago, it was four hundred and twenty thousand actual. And our projection this year is one point five three million. I noticed overall, for all schools, it's about two and a half million across seventy two boards. And we are one point one million. Why is our number so high, like, where's that going to, where does that funding go to?
Trustee Kennedy, I'll, I'll refocus all of us on the report.
Does this funding go towards this course?
So trustee Kennedy, I'll refocus and bring us all back to the report as it is presented here. So I'm not sure if your question has relevance to the report being presented, I don't think so. So if we can all focus on the report, I'll really appreciate that. So is there any relevance to the number?
Yes, I'm just focusing on the report that the course will be mandatory, and I'm wondering how this affects our budget.
Okay.
And how, and does this indigenous education grant going up of one point one million, it's only projections, does that go towards the course?
Okay, so is there any impact on the budget, superintendent loss?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, that funding can be used for part of it, but it also can be used for training. So one thing to remember too is this, this course is already part of a regular English, I don't want to say regular English, but a typical English course. We would be funded using the exact same mechanism as we're currently funded for, for, for any English course. So this is a, this is a typical English course, it's just it has an indigenous focus. It's regarding the one point something, but we got it, it was a significant amount, you're right, it went up significantly this year. This is something that I do not believe will be continued forward in this dollar amount going forward. So that's why it's something I mentioned before to trustee Saunders, is if we don't spend it all this year, it gets earmarked for future years. So. Well, that answers kind of both the one point four, one point five, whatever we end up getting a question, as well as how we're funded for this course.
Thank you, I'll come back to you, trustee Kennedy, I'll go to trustee Murphy first, trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I just wanted to follow up for some clarification on trustee Kelly's question about the AP, so the grade eleven AP. Will that, will the NBE course be offered for that or is that separate? I'm just trying to make sure I can field questions and I understand it, thank you.
Superintendent Kroll?
Again, we're still having conversations with schools around that, I've got a tentative meeting set up after March break with, with AP and IB coordinators. In grade eleven, they're getting the grade eleven English curriculum in both AP and IB. So they're getting a credit for grade eleven English, as well as getting additional learning to satisfy the AP college board, as well as IB. The, the, the intention of those courses in grade eleven is prepare students to write their AP or IB exams in grade twelve. We want to make sure that we have committed parents to, to deliver an AP and an IP program. So we want to make sure that we're able to honor that commitment to those parents while. As we implement this, this sort of new program, so we, we don't, we want to make sure that we promise what we deliver, or we deliver what we promised. So the short answers, the short answer is, we are going to, as much as possible. Provide alignment between the grade eleven, this new grade eleven curriculum and the AP and IB curriculum. But we would never do something that would be in the disservice of a student where they weren't prepared for their AP or IB exams.
And a follow up, can it be, can it be slotted in? New course be slotted into AP and still, or you just don't know that yet, and when will you know that?
Yeah. Sir, sir, through you, Mr. Chair, I've been here a while, I apologize. I, I guess, yeah, the, the short answer is, like, we will have that settled for students, well, you know, but like certainly within the next month, so that there's clear understanding for them for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, so just going back to how we fund the course, so last May, we had a bit of a conversation about the increase in indigenous funding. Trustee Saunders had mentioned there's a massive increase in funding. Trustee, oh, sorry, superintendent loss had said, I don't necessarily think that may impact our board now. And trustee Kroll mentioned, we're still trying to unpack that a little bit to see what the change is regarding the funding. You'd also mentioned trustee, sorry, superintendent Kroll, that your opinion is because that there's a greater uptake in these indigenous courses, the ministry started to de-incentive. Incentivize boards in running the courses at low numbers, so they don't have to pay for them. So we can't run courses at eight anymore. So is that, do you think that's still the case? Like, if, if, in, in, in the, in the schools that don't have it as a compulsory course right now, do we lose funding if the uptake isn't high enough?
Superintendent Kroll?
I'm going to certainly see that one to superintendent loss.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. Not necessarily, no, there is still, so what the ministry has done now going forward, and this is the technicality of it. Is if you have a, if you're offering indigenous course and it's less than your typical enrollment, so say that twenty three to one, just for simplicity. We are, there is an additional grant that we're eligible for to basically make the board whole, so that we do have the funding for it. If we have enough students in the indigenous class, let's say we have thirty kids and thirty students in our indigenous English. Then we're just funded the typical way we would be for any course. So to answer your question, I guess, I think your question was, will it have any negative impact on our funding? You would not, no. And how we're traditionally funded.
Thank you, superintendent loss, trustee Kennedy?
Just wondering.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just wondering how many, maybe this, maybe through you, maybe the superintendent, I'm not sure. How many total English classes this year in grade eleven? English classes are there in grade eleven of the six schools not participating in the pilot, rough estimate. And how many in those six schools do have an uptake in the course of indigenous English?
Superintendent Denalfo, would you know that offhand, superintendent Kroll?
Thank you, through you, Chair, unfortunately trustee Kennedy, I don't have that number right off. I don't know how many English courses each of the schools is offering right now for the semester. I don't have that number.
Next question.
Okay, so how many, maybe how many of the six do not have any indigenous English course this year? Is there, are there any schools that just don't have, they're not offering it at all?
Not sure if we have those records. Superintendent Denalfo? No, superintendent Kroll?
We could provide that information, I just wasn't prepared to answer that question tonight.
We can provide this information to trustees after the meeting. Go ahead. You're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm just going back to my original question about numbers. So there are four hundred students who took the course. Ballpark, out of, I guess, I just want to number like twenty five hundred grade eleven students.
Yeah, I, through you, Mr. Chair, I wouldn't be able to give you, like, I, I, I don't have those numbers, I don't, I don't want to.
You don't know how many grade eleven students we have at ten high schools roughly?
Provide that number for you, I just don't have them right now.
So I'm just wondering, like, when you go from four hundred to potentially twenty five hundred students. So at the end of next year or next semester. Can we, if this goes ahead, because I see there's a notice of motion. If this goes ahead, are we able to receive some sort of survey on that? How that went, like, going from four hundred to twenty five hundred? Feedback from a lot of students.
Not sure if trustee, I'm not sure of the question, superintendent Kroll, you understood the question?
Yeah, I do understand the question, I would say that it is typically, when we do a pilot, we'll, we'll, we'll look for feedback after the pilot. Once you've made the decision for implementation, I, I don't know what the purpose would be to go back out. Because I think if we've made a decision that this is the direction we want to move forward in, we wouldn't want to, we would want to commit to that path going forward. I can certainly give that some thought, but it's not a commitment I could make today.
Thank you, trustee Caraba, follow up? Okay, we'll go back to trustee Kennedy, no question.
Just my understanding, is it that we have roughly around, maybe through, through you, Mr. Chair, about thirteen and a half thousand high school students, is that rough estimate? Close for high school overall?
I can, I can check. Superintendent Denalfo?
We currently have thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty four.
Nine hundred. So. If we, if we use that, if we use that number, it's probably like thirty four hundred, divided by four, I would imagine they're all fairly equal, thirty four hundred, maybe grade eleven students for, for trustee Caraba. So if we have, if we have roughly that many. High school students, we've got about ten schools. That makes me think we've got maybe an average of fourteen hundred students per high school, approximately, I know some are lower and some are twenty eight hundred or twenty six hundred. But my question is, you know, if we, if we divide that number by four grades per school, it's about three hundred and fifty grade eleven students per school, that's roughly what I'm getting when you average it out. So my question is, how many students took the, the optional NBE course last year? On average per school? Out of three hundred and fifty grade eleven?
Superintendent Kroll, I think the number was given, the number will not change. So it's four hundred.
Yeah, I, I.
No, no, that wasn't the question.
Yeah. On average, at each school?
No, the, the question was last year, not this year, so last year, when it was optional. How many students on, how many, how many students took this optional course last year on average per school, last?
Superintendent Kroll?
I don't have that information here.
We don't have the information.
Can I follow up?
Yep, go ahead.
So maybe I'll just follow up to our board meeting on May second, twenty twenty three. At, I asked superintendent Kroll, what was the, what was the attendance at the course and we initially piloted it? What was the uptake rate? And superintendent Kroll had mentioned, it depends school to school, to be honest. But I know some schools that have had as high as sixteen, others will have it as low as eight. Is that still, that's what you had mentioned last year, is that, is that no longer the case?
Uh, trustee Kennedy, I'm not sure where we are going with this, we're talking about a report presented, can we stay on track and ask the questions? We had a great discussion, we encouraged the discussion, but I think we should really stay on track and focus on, on the report. So let's ask straight questions to superintendent Kroll.
Yes, so straight questions just regarding the survey, just kind of.
I, I think we're just going around in circles here and I'm not getting the point myself, so let's ask them.
The point is to know, last year when it was a pilot.
Right.
Uh, optional, how many students on average took it in a roughly three hundred and fifty student, grade eleven. Student load per, per school, how many took it optionally?
Okay, and it's just an information or it's, you're getting?
No, I want to know, is that number, because it wasn't sure at that time, it was mentioned eight to sixteen.
Okay, let's do this, superintendent Kroll has the answer.
I don't, as I said before, I do not have the information, that's information the trustees are very interested, we certainly can provide that information. I didn't realize that that was a question that you wanted to follow up from, from the May, May meeting, you certainly can email it anytime, I'm happy to, I can answer your questions like that.
Okay. Did that, yeah, you want to follow up on that?
So, so if, if, if those numbers are still accurate, that's about a, a five percent uptake out of roughly, you know, three hundred and fifty students. So that's what I'm getting from those who voluntarily, about five. So that's what I'm getting from those who voluntarily, about five percent voluntarily took the course.
Superintendent Kroll.
I can, if that's the math you're doing, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So at this point in time, we had a long, lengthy discussion here. Great questions from trustees, great responses. Trustees will have an opportunity. There's a notice of motion. And we'll continue the discussion, but I think we, today we try to stay on focus with the presentation. Great. Thank you so much. With that, thank you, Superintendent Kroll. Thank you, Sherry, for your wonderful presentation. Thanks for the numbers. The, the feedback is good and trustees will, will ponder on this information.
Board Chair.
Thank you so much.
Board Chair, I, I just wanted to follow up with my point of order. It's by law seventeen-one.
Trustee Saunders, we ruled on that point of order.
I just wanted to give you the bylaw seventeen-one.
Trustee Saunders, we ruled on the point of order. If you have another point of order, raise it up and we'll discuss it.
On the order?
Can you state it?
Yeah, seventeen-one by law.
Okay. Can you state seventeen point one?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's two pages long, but, but, Board Chair, you made it very clear what the expectations of our board is in the last meeting. And I believe this behavior is in contrast to that. So I'd like you to make a ruling on that.
Can you state, trustee Saunders, you, you are pointing me to a breach of code of conduct?
Yes.
Can you, yeah, and, and can you, can you elaborate more on that?
Well, in the, in the last meeting, you made it very clear what the expectations are of board members and, and are how we should be treating controversial issues. And I believe this is in contrast to what your direction was to us.
Can you state what was in contrast, trustee?
Correct.
Can you state what was in contrast to that?
Uh, wearing the kaffiyah is, is a political statement.
Trustee Saunders, first of all. I don't see anything in this regarding someone's dress up, or the, some, someone dresses up, number one. Number two is that in our school board, we respect everybody's right to dress up. Okay? I think you're misinterpreting this code of conduct and the way it's written here. Trustee Saunders, you point, please, if you could point me out to something specific here.
All I can say is you made very clear.
No, no, trustee Saunders, hold on. I have the floor. I, I'm speaking. Can you point me out to here, something in this code of conduct here, item seventeen point one, which points to some, the, the way someone dresses up?
Yeah, I, I.
And it's not appropriate.
I can go through in detail, but you made very clear the expectations of, of the board.
Trustee Saunders. Mr. Chair, point of order.
Trustee Saunders, trustee Saunders.
It's not debatable.
You don't have a floor.
Point of order and the trust rules.
I've ruled.
Okay.
That your point of order is out of order. I'm ruling it again. It's out of order. And there's no debate on that. Okay? Thank you. Trustee Saunders, once I rule on that point of order, you only have a chance to appeal that. Okay? And if you, if, if you appeal, then I'll need a secondar for that. And then I'll rule again out of order, if at all it's out of order. So be ready for that. Okay? So just telling how it goes.
Yep.
So I ruled you out of order one time. I ruled you out of order a second time. Thank you. We shall, with that, we shall move on to information items. Item number eleven, director's report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, everyone. A brief director's report this evening and one really its response to a question I had from a trustee that I think is, is timely and as a former principal, certainly saw this item as something that was almost marked the seasons through the school year. And this has to do particularly for high schools, the Immunization of School Pupils Act. And that's why I thought I'd, I'd bring it up today in terms of information dissemination and also opportunity perhaps for some clarity around this. Again, thank Superintendent Bakic because work in terms of information regarding this is something that falls under her responsibility. And we might need some clarity from her on a few of these things, but it's fairly straightforward. But it's a little bit misunderstood. That's maybe an understatement. Because I think this is where we have the role of, in particular, school staff and in particular principals. And we also have the role of our leaders within the community who are part of our, of the public health departments, whether we're in Halton or anywhere else in Ontario. And it's also a bit of an overlap or of two different acts too. And that is the Education Act and all the other ones that flow from that for schools, which is really governs almost everything that happens in a school. And another one called the Immunization of School Pupils Act. So the Immunization of School Pupils Act, which is a provincial legislation, also known as ISPA or ISPA, requires that all students be fully immunized against several designated, and there's a listing of designated diseases, or that their parent or guardian submit a valid vaccine exemption. So you either go one direction or the other for their student to attend school. The chief medical officer of health has the authority to issue under that a suspension order to a student for not complying with the requirements under the act. The enforcement in Halton region right now has a, an emphasis on the grade nine to twelve students and a focus in particularly on grade eleven and twelve. As a parent, I'm not adverse to the fact that particularly under COVID, I think some routines that we had in our lives might have been unaddressed for a couple of years. So I think there's probably more of a, a need for attention to this than would be otherwise. So the focus here in Halton at least has been on the grades eleven and twelve. I do remember much easier getting, like I said before, a little five-year-old to the doctor than it is to get a larger sixteen or seventeen-year-old to the doctor. So they need a, a valid documentation for, again, it's pretty binary, one or the other, up-to-date immunization or vaccine exemption. Otherwise, under this act, the chief medical officer is able to suspend the students from school. In the case of where we are right now, timeline and this place and time, those letters would have gone to parents a couple of weeks ago. And then the, if there is a case where there's someone who's left without that documentation, then there is a suspension from school that takes place on the twenty-first of March and would last for twenty days or until such time as the documentation is in. Again, my memory of being a principal was that there was generally panic and a great deal of activity. As parents got to doctors or got to public health, and then there was trying to look for documentation. And then generally, speaking over the days and sometimes weeks that followed, there was, these things were rectified. So it's not obviously the case that there's many people who are, who are suspended due to that. But it's important to know because parents sometimes get confused, why is the principal doing this to my child? So it's a separate thing. Principals have the obligation and the right to follow the Education Act. And that sometimes means, as we're aware, that suspensions will ensue under that. But in this case, under this act, it is the chief medical officer that does that. And we are obligated as, again, partners to ensure that we assist with that. So it's, I think sometimes there's that confusion. It's not too, it, it's important that we have that, understanding that distinction. And then, again, once the documentation comes in one way or the other, then the suspension is lifted. In terms of noteworthy days, we are in, again, the month of March. And the month of March leads us to the end of Lent and toward the great season of Easter. But it's important to know that our schools are not separate from the community in which they work and the community that they serve. And so it's, I think, a good reminder to know that we do have things that are celebrated, things that are marked, things that are focused on over the month. And of course, you see them there in front of you and there's a bit of a legend that people have seen before to know what each of those colors means. So whether it is a, a monthly focus on heritage or whether there are religious festivals that are there, whether it's a focus on certain professions, in this case, certainly for schools, we reap the benefits of the support and the contributions of many social workers. International Women's Day, of course, extremely important. And then even such things as the opportunity to lose an hour of sleep starting next week. And again, the first day of spring, for many, St. Patrick's Day, et cetera, et cetera. And Earth Hour and other, again, days of appreciation mark what the calendar is for the month of March. So not earth-shattering news tonight. And I know that the first one in particular was a response to some queries from, from trustees. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this point.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, do we have questions? Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Is the, is the suspension part of progressive discipline? And if so, what impact might that have on post-secondary education?
Director Klein?
Yeah, I can look at my colleagues over here. No, but they're not, it's not part of progressive discipline. Because this is something that goes under that, that ISPA. Look at Superintendent Cordero. I, I would think in the realm of possibility, we could trans, we could shift into that. But I'll ask what Superintendent Cordero has to say.
Superintendent Cordero. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. The immunization vaccination program in Ontario schools as administered by Ministry of Health is a suspension of attendance from school. It's not a suspension from school in the realm of progressive discipline. So there is no formal suspension letter. There's a letter that is issued by, from what I understand, from the Ministry of Health, indicating that the student is not to return or resume their academic studies in the building until they have had completed the immunization or vaccinations, and then they can, are free to return. But there is no suspension letter of progressive discipline that goes into their OSR, has any impact in the world of progressive discipline or post-secondary pathways and so forth. So again, it's a suspension from attendance or a suspension of attendance from schools versus a suspension from school for, for progressive discipline reasons.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. You have a follow up?
Just unrelated, just through you, Mr. Chair, just wondering if maybe at a future director's report, Director Klein can give us any updates of things that are going on in the school from visits? I know you've been doing some visits lately. Maybe you could just share some of the good things happening in our schools. That's all.
Trustee Kennedy, I think that's part of the trustees' weekly feedback that we get. This is about the school system as a whole, which director's report is supposed to reflect. And again, it's up to Director Klein. And Director Klein, if you would like to add some of the highlights or, I mean, it's up to you. It's your report. End of the day, Director Klein. Thank you. Any other questions from trustees? Saying none. Thank you, Director Klein, for your report. And with that, we shall move on to item eleven point two, eleven point two, appointment of student trustees for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Superintendent Del Sordo, could you please present your report and the students?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this is to inform the trustees of the process and results of the election for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five student trustees. On Wednesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the election of the student trustees for twenty-four, twenty-five school year took place at St. Ignatius of Loyola Catholic Secondary School. The secondary school submitted the name of a candidate, all of whom were of excellent caliber, demonstrating a strong commitment to their faith as well as extensive involvement in the respective school and community. The candidates had an opportunity to articulate their rationale for expressing interest in representing the students of the Halton Catholic District School Board. The candidates responded to numerous questions posed from student senators. All the candidates were interviewed. The student senate voted on balance provided. Staff advisors, Vice Principal Sonia Allison, Principal Patrick Busby, Vice Principal Catherine Seraphin, and St. Ceteri Chaplaincy Leader, Endra Taylor supervised the counting of the ballots. As a result of the election on Wednesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the following three student trustees were elected by the senate for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to introduce you to our Burlington trustee, Isabelle Yuboa. Isabel is currently a grade ten honor roll student at Notre Dame Catholic Secondary School. He demonstrates her commitment to excel academically while maintaining a balance with extracurricular activities. Isabel is a global citizen, dedicated to advocating for system change. She actively participates in various social justice initiatives and a wide range of other activities such as BSU, basketball, track and field, and art. Welcome, Isabel. Our North Halton student trustee is Sophia Filbert. Sophia is currently a grade eleven honor roll student at St. Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School. He demonstrates a high level of commitment to her coursework and the ability to manage the many extracurricular tasks she's involved with, including the Halton Catholic District School Board Student Senator, the St. FX DECA member, volleyball team member, the St. FX BSU member. And Sophia has enthusiastically embraced this work, both in the school and the larger community. Welcome, Sophia. And our Oakville represented student trustee, re-elected, is Lauren McGuire. Lauren has currently, no stranger to us, is currently a grade eleven honor roll student at St. Ignatius of Loyola Catholic Secondary School. Lauren serves as a student senator, co-lead, contributes to the Halton Catholic District School Board Wide Equity Group, and the EQAO Student Advisory Group, a provincial level committee. This past year, Lauren has been a member of the Student Trustee Association. Additionally, she's been a member of the Best Buddies, the Debate Team, and the Reach Trivia Team Junior Captain. Lauren's dedication to the school and the Halton Catholic District School community is evident through her performance as a student trustee representing Oakville for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Welcome back, Lauren. I had the distinct pleasure of listening to all the speeches of the wonderful student trustees nominees. And I must share with you that the caliber of students was sensational. Made me reflect on my own teenage life and realized I've done nothing. And at the end of the day, I did email the principals to let them know of the outstanding students that are here and their ability to articulate a vision and be able to handle questions from the floor. Not only impressed me, made me realize that the world is going to be okay. So ladies and gentlemen, our student trustees for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Superintendent Del Sordo. Thank you for your report and thank you for presenting our student trustees. I shall now open up the floor to our trustees if they want to have any comments. If they don't have any comments, okay, trustee Chua, you have the floor.
I just wanted to say, I'm so proud of all three of you. Lauren, I'm so proud for you getting a second term. I think many people know this, because I tell everyone, ever since Sophia was in grade nine, she was a lead senator. And I've always been rooting her, for her to become a student trustee and take over my spot. I am so incredibly proud that St. FX has a third year for student trustee and that it is Sophia. And Isabel is such a powerful speaker. I heard you speak and I was like, oh, my gosh. Like, she is going to be the next Burlington student trustee. Halton Catholic is so set for the future. You have three powerful women who know what they're doing and are honestly girl bosses to run this board and can express student voice. So I'm just going to say, I'm sad that I'm going, but you have amazing student trustees on your hands.
Thank you. Trustee Deepu.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, I basically have the same thing to say. Obviously, I'm outgoing as well, but I have the pleasure to be staying another year since I'm going into grade twelve right now. And I'm able to see what they're going to achieve this upcoming year. And I'm so excited to see that. I've known, like Ari said, I've known Sophia for a while now, since grade nine. And I just met Isabel and I'm, and I know Lauren, she's my co. But all three of them, I, I'm like, I'm just excited to see what they're going to do. So I'm really proud of you guys and thank you. So I'm really proud of you guys and thank you so much for stepping up to this role. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Deepu. So with that, I want to, once again, congratulate all three of you on your election and reelection. Welcome to our board. You had a little sample of our board meeting today. Keep tuning into our board meetings. You're welcome to come to our board meetings and 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 understand the processes. So in come September, you will be ready to take your seats. So once again, thank you for coming and thank you, Superintendent Del Sordo, for presenting. Thank you. With that, we shall move on to item eleven point three, Halton Student Transportation Services, HST, HSTS, Annual Home-to-School Transportation Review. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Attached is the HSTS, Annual Home-to-School Transportation Review, which was approved at the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four HSTS Board Meeting. Please note, trustees, that there's two schools that are impacted at HCSB for September of twenty twenty-four. Holy Rosary Milton being one and Saint Dominique's Catholic Elementary School being the other. For September twenty twenty-five, there's currently one HCSB school that is impacted, Saint Andrews Catholic Elementary School. Also included in this report are the remaining busing exemptions that we have as a board, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Loft? Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just running about transportation funding. So Superintendent Loft, I believe you said last year the ministry had reduced our funding, but then they brought it up to the, like, the base level so we wouldn't get more, even though we were going to get a reduction? Did they bring it up like we thought they would?
So again, trustee Kennedy, we are focusing on the report, but we shall take that question. Trustee, sorry, Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, trustee Kennedy, it it has. So obviously, we're getting our payments on the transfer payments on a monthly basis, but it should be where we said it was back at estimate. So we are funded for what we initially thought we were going to be funded for this year.
Trustee Kennedy?
And then, and for for this year, we had a lower expected expense for transportation, about two fifty. Is there, is it because we consolidated routes or?
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and to trustee Kennedy, that is, that is correct. A lot, it's gone down a bit. Consolidation of routes is a big part of it. And that's one of the main parts, to be honest, of our routes that have gone down. And just more efficiencies we found, or HSTS is found with respect to our routes. We're still in a deficit overall, but it's it's better than anticipated, the deficits. But it still is a negative deficit.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, I'll come back. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. That was my, I was wondering if when we spoke at a board meeting about finding efficiencies, whether it was because of these routes that have changed or is there?
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair, again, to trustee Carabella. Not these ones, trustee, because these ones are for next year. So these routes are, and it's it's, these aren't really, well, I guess there are kind of efficiencies per se, but these aren't, these have no impact on current year. So the first two are for September of twenty twenty-four, and then the one for Saint Andrews is following year. So September twenty twenty-five, so they really don't have any impact on this year's.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Kennedy?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So did any of the efficiencies result in, like, any students who had the bus the year before not get it the year after? Or or did we have, for another reason, did we end up having any less courtesy seats because of the reduction, because of the efficiencies?
Superintendent Loft?
Yeah, trustee Kennedy, I wasn't, I don't have that information on me right now. But I do say, I can say that these ones here have no impact on any of the efficiencies, because they're all for next, next year and the following year.
The trustees are always welcome to attend each HSTS meetings and I've ensured that you get the invite. You'll get invited a few days earlier now, so just so that you prepare your schedules and you're more than welcome to come. You're more than welcome to attend as observers. But questions that you have responded to me, also been done in Loft, and we will have them answered. But they're good questions. Again, no further questions, then we shall move on to miscellaneous, trustee Carabella, your hand is up or? Okay, thank you. We shall move on to our next order of businesses, miscellaneous information. Student trustees, do you have a report? No? Okay, we shall move on to item twelve point two, OCSDA update. Trustee Ohan Chanada, could you please present your report?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I I just wanted to note, the report that I had submitted is fairly long and it has a lot of detail in it, so I won't do it justice by reading it. I just want to say that, excuse me, a lot of the conversations this evening go against the resolutions that we prepare as a board that goes to OXXA, then they refer to a certain committee. These are the things that we need to continue to have our voice heard at the OXXA table so that it can be moved on to the ministry table. Very, very, very important. So I thank to everyone that's involved in that. And looking at the AGM that's coming up in May and the Canadian Council of Committee Trustees that's going on in August. So so please read the attached, it has lots of good information. And always I refer you back to the OXXA website. There's a lot of good training modules on the website as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada, for your update. Trustees, do we have any questions for trustee Ohan Chanada? Saying none, once again, thanks, trustee Ohan Chanada. We shall move on to our next order of business is correspondence. We have two letters of resolutions that I forward to trustees. These are the resolutions, part of the four resolutions that we had last year. And the good news and the great news is that all four of our resolutions got accepted by the OXXA committee and looking at these resolutions, and they have, they are being petitioned with the ministry for funding on different levels, okay? These are very important, as trustee Ohan Chanada mentioned, because we know where we stand as far as funding is concerned. So thank you to all the trustees. I want to thank trustee Ohan Chanada, Vice Chair Agnew, and all our senior staff, who has helped us put those four resolutions together. And we can make these things work together, okay? So so thank you so much for that. And this year, we have put three resolutions. We hope we can get these resolutions going the same way we had with those four. With that, we shall move on to open question period. And Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted for tonight?
When I check, no, but I'll stop.
Thank you, Director Klein. We move on to item fifteen in camera. We do not need to go into camera. Resolutions regarding absentees, we have all trustees present today. And then we move on.
Sorry, just had my end up. The resolutions you mentioned?
Yep.
Is that anything to do with the letter we wrote about green energy funding? Do we get a, is that a good response?
No, no, that's different. That's a, that was a different. So our resolutions were on on different topics that that could have been one of the resolutions if you had picked it up to. But that was a separate letter which went, and we had three resolutions which came to the board a couple of meetings back and that they will be voted on at the AGM, upcoming AGM. And then it goes into, goes into a silo where they start looking at it and deciding what's important. So we look forward to that. So thank you for that. We move on to our last order of business for today is the adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Saunders moves, looking for a secondar. Trustee Carabella moves, sorry? Okay, okay. I just heard a question, trustees? Trustee Kennedy, I heard something. No, there's no point of. Okay, so so we are adjournment and closing prayer, moved by trustee Saunders, seconded by trustee Carabella. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none, motion carries. Trustee Paul, you had a question regarding anything? No, okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Trustee Murphy, could you please lead us in the closing prayer?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. As we conclude this board meeting, let us honor the spirit of Saint Joseph, patron of workers and guardians and the saint to whom march is dedicated. May his example of diligence, integrity, and humility inspire us in our endeavors and let us bow our heads in prayer, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord, in this sacred month dedicated to Saint Joseph, we gather in gratitude for his steadfast example of faith and humility. As we honor his life and virtues, we ask for his intercession in our daily lives and endeavors. Saint Joseph, foster father of Jesus and guardian of the holy family, teach us to embrace our responsibilities with courage and love. Help us to cultivate a spirit of devotion and service, following your example of obedience to God's will. May this month be a time of renewal and inspiration as we strive to emulate your virtues in our own lives. Through your prayers, may we draw closer to Christ and find strength in our journey of faith. Amen.
Thank you, everybody, for a great meeting. Good night.